Evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 25th, 2025. We're meeting in the Wacoite Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We broadcast live on local cable eight and 1072 and stream live on the Town of Mashpee website. It's 6:00 PM and we will convene in open session. In order to have a productive meeting, I would ask that everybody silence their cellphones. And there are a lot of people here, so please remain quiet while others are speaking. I appreciate it. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in terms of our law for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence for all those who have died as a result of overdose, their families, friends, and all others who have been touched by substance abuse? First thing on our agenda is approval of minutes. I'm sure everybody's looked at them. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We have next listed on the agenda, public comments for current agenda items. What I'm going to do is move that down just a little bit because I want us to be able to have, there are a lot of people here, and I want us to start our 6:05 public hearing on time, which is the application to reconfigure permitted agriculture grant site 14. We'll start that in just a minute. We also have the number two. I assume that nobody is here for the review of the recommendation for the award of the contract for drainage. Maybe we could start with that and go to 6:05 for the hearing.
Madam Chair, you're referring to the...
Item two.
Item number two, yes. The Director of Public Works was unable to attend this evening, but you should have a memorandum. If there are any questions in follow-up to that memorandum, then certainly I can have her at the next meeting. Otherwise, I think the contents of the memo speaks for itself and hopefully it satisfies whatever issues the board may have.
Motion to approve award of contracts per the notice provided.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, it's Acme Surely Precast Company, Inc.
For fiscal year 2026, a two-year term?
Yes, one of two-year contract.
Right.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Okay. It's just about 6:05. Would you want to read the notice for the public hearing? Thank you.
Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 130, Section 57 and 60, the Mashpee Port of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the request by Joel Quinterio of Two Lowell Road, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, to reconfigure his permitted aquacultural culture grant site number 14 located at Great River. Said hearing will be held on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 6:05 PM in the Wacoite Meeting Room in Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Plans for the existing and proposed area are on file at the office of the Select Board in Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass.
Is Mr. Cutaro here? Would you please come up? Would you start by helping me pronounce your last name? I know I didn't pronounce it.
Cutaro.
Cutaro, thank you. And you're with Constable Avis?
Yes.
Want to take us through this briefly?
Sure. So this is just a simple, if in your packet you should have a picture of the old map, and you'll see that the configuration is really kind of a weird shape. And all we're trying to do here is to make it a rectangle, which makes it easier for him to line up his cages in a more even, and he can get more cages there. There's no increase in acreage and stuff. Shellfish Commission has voted to approve. Harbor Master has no issues. So it's really up to you. And then it does have to go in front of the Department of Marine Fisheries for their approval.
I was amazed, just by the reconfiguration, you can add an additional 80 beds?
Yes, because the way that the, you know, instead of having them curved and individual now, Mr. Cutaro will be able to line up his cages straight all the way down and be able to produce more oysters, which in turn helps us also clean the water.
It'll just, the reconfiguration, the way it is now, I have to position the cages like east and west, and it's not really ideal. By reconfiguring to this design, I can put them north and south, all the equipment, and it just makes it more efficient for me to work it. And the current just makes it better for the oysters because the river runs north and south, and the cages would be facing north and south, not east and west.
Are there questions?
No.
I don't.
John? Tracy?
No.
Are there questions from members of the public? Yes, Mr. Ronhock.
Mike Ronhock, 104 DeGrasse Road, Mashpee. Has the plan that I have here that I saw at Town Hall last week, is this still a current configuration, the wording and stuff?
I think Chris would be able to help.
How are you doing, Mike?
That is not true. So the, what Mr. Ronhock just gave me is...
I'm speaking on the mic.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mike, excuse me.
Chris?
The current shape is similar, not exactly as what's in your packet that Mr. Ronhock gave me. And it's showing 1.9 acres, and the new configuration shows here 2.0 acres is not correct. So this document, I believe, came from Mr. Cutaro, and it's been, the reconfiguration does not add any acreage. It's still 1.04 acres as the original. We're just making it a rectangle from sort of an oblong shape.
Right, this is the original right here.
That's correct. You have the original.
This is the original, right, exactly.
And then the new one...
Mike, it's going to look like this. Okay. It's gonna, so it's gonna stay one acre, not be expanded to two?
That's correct.
Okay. I want to make sure the board was, had the correct information, because I got this from the Selectmen's office on Wednesday or Thursday of this week. And with this information, it was getting doubled in size.
Right, and that's not happening.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not going to be two acres.
And it's gonna, and it is going to the Marine Fisheries and Army Corps Engineers?
Yes, has to go through the whole process.
So it has to go through the whole process. I just want to make sure the process is fair. There's other people in town that have gone through reams of paperwork to get these grants. And, you know, when I saw that it was going to be doubled in size, I want to make sure it was done correctly, because that was not the correct information you were going to be presented with, not that, that was at Town Hall.
Yeah.
So...
But now that you have, now that you have the correct information, do you have any other questions?
No, I want to make sure you have the correct information. I knew what the grant was, because I developed it with Rick York originally. And the odd shape is, was because he had limitations to Coastal Bank, limitations to navigational channel, the mooring field, and the town propagation areas. That's why it's an odd shape. It wasn't random. It was, it was Rick developed it. I didn't develop that shape. That's the reason why it's an odd shape. So I want, I just want to make sure that was being correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Are there any other members of the public? Seeing none, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Members of this board have any further questions? So could we have a motion to reconfigure the permitted agriculture grant site number 14 located in Great River to Mr. Joe Cutaro?
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We're all set. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Town Manager, is Dave Morris here? Should I take three, the fee charges, so Dave doesn't have to wait?
He is here.
Okay.
He is here.
Okay. Mr. Morris, would you come up and just take us through these fee charges, please? Thank you. How are you?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Dave Morris, sitting in the Building Commissioner for the Town of Mashpee. I'm here tonight to ask for approval for a couple of fee increases for the services rendered by my department. The first is a proposal increasing our current short-term rental periodic inspection fee. As you know, I think from last week's meeting, that a change in the Massachusetts Building Code now requires a building official to do these inspections. Until now, it was done by the Health Department. I'm proposing a fee increase from the current $100 collected by the, by the Health Department to, to $125 per inspection. The reason for this is the increase, the reason for the increase is my department, it gets an immediate burden for over 450 to like 500 more inspections. And, and the additional work, additional work in bet and, and the workload, and possible expenditures for the qualified, what I want to do is cover the expenditures for a qualified, for a qualified inspector to be there. The second proposal is for a $50 processing fee for the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I don't know any town that doesn't have a fee for this, for this document. And I just found out, I just realized that we, our current permidized system doesn't account for, doesn't count for these increases, you know, numbers. It doesn't, it doesn't record it in our system because there isn't a dollar value put in that. I want the, I'm asking for a fee of $50 for a certificate of occupancy. And lastly, I would like to set a minimum fee throughout the services for my office to 50 bucks. We still have some miscellaneous fees that are like at $35, and some are $40. I just want to set a minimum fee of $50 across the board.
Questions?
Not take any questions you might have.
I just have a question on that, on that third part. So we, I understand, totally understand, the short-term rental is going from 100 to 125, correct?
Yeah.
I'm good with that. The second one is the processing of occupancy permit, right?
Correct, yes.
And that's $50?
Yeah.
And you had a third request?
I had a third request. I looked at some of the plumbing and electrical inspections, their fees, and I noticed that they, they were, some of them were like $35 range, and I would like to just, I just wanted to implement a minimum fee for all these, for all these at $50, if it's not too much.
I, I wouldn't mind that, except my thought would be, I'd be more comfortable with, you know, voting on these two, and then if you can submit something in writing to us with whatever else changes you want, because we don't have anything on that.
Fair enough.
Please.
I was just going to say, because that's not in the paperwork, my recommendation would be to table the latter, and then if you want to vote on what is here that was distributed, then feel free to do so. But I would definitely table that because we never had a chance to post that.
And then you can come back once we have it.
Understood.
Is there a motion?
I have a...
Oh, I, well, I apologize.
Go ahead. I did have a question about the $50 fee. Is that standard or for the occupancy?
For the occupancy?
Yeah.
I've done, I've got some, you know, comparables from throughout the Cape Falmouthers, has them at $100, some of them are $75. $50 is pretty reasonable rate for what, you know, where we are.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the purposes of clarity, for the record, we should separate these two into two separate motions, correct?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Yes.
All right. First motion to increase per the notification, the short-term rental periodic inspection fee from $100, raising it to 125?
Second.
Per the recommendations.
Is there any discussion? That makes you, that puts you on base with everybody else.
Thank you.
No, I was just asking you, that puts you at about the same price rate as everybody else.
I would, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I, yeah.
All right. John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Second motion would be to implement a processing fee of $50 for the issuance of a certificate of occupancy per the recommendation of David Morris, Building Commissioner.
Second.
No discussion? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And could I have the list for public comment? Okay. So if you wish to provide public comment and haven't added your name, I'll have you come up and, and do that, I'll give it to the recording secretary. I'll recognize you in the order you've signed in, and at that point, please come up to the microphone, state your name, the name of the street on which you live. You'll have three minutes, because we have a full house, to provide public comment. I think it's important to say that the Select Board doesn't respond to public comment, but will take each of your comments into consideration. And again, as a reminder, kindly remain silent while others are speaking. Thank you. All right, I have Meredith Harris.
Hi, good evening. Meredith Harris, Main Street, Mashpee. Although I'm a member of the sewer commission, I'm speaking as a private citizen. And I'm speaking for, or in support of the warrant article about the cluster system on Mashpee Wakeby Pond. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about Mashpee water and clean water and being sure that we are addressing, cleaning it up. And I'm concerned that we work all together. I, though, although, I do live on the pond, I do think it's important that people understand that it's all the water in Mashpee that's a concern. And that the need to address the 2015 plan is a plan that's 10 years old, and the environment has not stayed the same over the last 10 years, and there's a need to move forward. Some of the arguments that I've heard against this plan is that we should do Wacoite Bay instead. We cannot swap out one for the other. The state has offered us the chance for funding for this project. It's not interchangeable. We should follow the 2015 plan? We have tried to follow the 2015 plan. We started an aquaculture program. The water was so degraded, the aquaculture program failed at the very beginning. We were told to use joint base Cape Cod to help address Wacoite Bay. That has not worked out, and there are other alternatives that now have to come on the table. This plan for 2015 needs to be adapted to fit the environment, and we need to move forward. It's easy to say, I don't like the plan. It's easy to say, not in my backyard. This plan is about change, and none of us like change, and I understand that and I accept it. But we all have to think about moving forward. We all have to think about contributing to changing the plan and watching as the plan moves forward so that we can continue to clean up our water. We cannot afford to do nothing. And if you look at the 2015 plan, there is a no-plan alternative, which is detrimental to all of us. So again, I am in support of moving forward with this next step in cleaning up our waters in Mashpee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Next, I have Mike Ronhock. I don't know if Mike was here for, is Mike still here? I think he wanted to speak about the shellfish. If he comes back, we'll go back to him. Joe Benet? Hi, Mr. Benet.
My name's Joe Benet. I live at 27 Gunter's Lane in Mashpee. And this plan, it takes me back to when my kids were at school. They, they learned about the glacial push, what formed the Cape, the kettle ponds, and these marines. These marines are amazing, and there's one right in my backyard. It's right where they want to put this. It took me 12 dump trucks to make a flat spot in my backyard when I, it's a quarter-acre lot, so a small, flat spot in my backyard because I was on the sloped side. 12 dump trucks of dirt to get that flat, and it's a small area, about 30 feet, and it goes the length of my yard. Now, I don't know how much thought and how much work has been put into this thing. When I look at the archaeological survey, there's nothing that's said about identifying areas of historical or cultural value. My daughters, when we would hike in these trails, one would stand on top and then the other would go down below, and we'd see the differences in height here. They're just like these, these massive hills. It's a beautiful area. It's, right now, the trail that runs through there is maintained just by local residences. We used to walk my dog back, going up through Mashpee High School, off to college, graduated and all, and now there's a whole nother group of kids that I hear walking those trails back there. And I hear the laughing and then the giggling that, that used to take place back when walking my kids and my dog back there. It'd be a shame to see it go. I'm not opposed to the, the clean water and these plans, the phases of the plans. You know, some of them are working, some of them aren't. But when we start throwing millions of dollars into something, then we realize we need millions more because we need more dirt, more fill, more packing, more tree cutting. We're setting ourselves up for a big failure just because the state says, here's, here's a couple million, spend it now or lose it forever. I mean, where are we with this? That it happened so fast that we just got notifications in our neighborhood that the surveyors are coming through, marking up the streets and saying, hey, this is part of our new plan, you know? The recent meetings and the, the people in our neighborhood that are talking out about it, it's because we didn't know. And now we know, and we're hitting zoning meetings, we're hitting Select Board meetings, we're hitting every meeting, and, and trying to get word out there to get people informed. Because we feel like this is a spot that works, and it's a quick fix, so let's do something. But we don't think that the proper planning has gone into this, or it's the right area for it to even happen. So that's, that's our feelings on it, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Benet. Hi, Ms. Aziz.
Good evening. Christine Aziz, I live at 36 Gunter's Lane, and I've lived there since 1994. And I regularly walk in the woods, now referred to as Zero Gunter's Lane, which is a pristine area now targeted for a wastewater treatment facility. I'm speaking to you today as a resident who feels unheard. The town required open space for this cluster subdivision, did a tax-taking, and claimed the land would be placed in conservation, but now says that that does not apply because it was never officially designated. I don't know how to believe or what to believe when the town requires open space for a cluster division, then does a tax-taking, and states the land will be held in conservation, and then the town claims they can ignore these deed restrictions and commitments because, oops, we never did put the land in conservation, so too bad, because that's how it feels. And it is not easy to contest this, because I'm passionate about the health of our waterways. We've been told only five acres would be used, yet there's talk of expanding and including sandwich residents going from 30,000 gallons per day to 60,000 gallons per day. This plan threatens a valued natural space and would become an eyesore for the homes abiding it. There is also confusion over why Mashpee Wakeby Sewering is prioritized over Wacoite Bay. And I will tell you that if this plan proceeds, it presents a serious breach of trust with the residents. There has been a lack of transparency. Despite town representations to the contrary in recent meetings, the location was never publicly disclosed or shared with the neighborhood. I only learned about it in June after spotting a surveyor in my yard. My call to the wastewater director went unanswered. I later received a letter via the certifying company stating this land was being surveyed for the wastewater treatment facility. The town's own website shows plans for the facility and land, which has been labeled, protected, and signed as open space by the Conservation Commission. I feel my concerns are being dismissed. I've attended multiple meetings to express concerns and have been told, this is happening. I've been warned to stay collegial and told that we are one Mashpee, and implied if I oppose clean water, that I oppose clean water if I raise objections. But it's clear, Pimlico Heights residents were excluded from early input. The supporters of the plan are far more organized and had direct access to town officials. We did not. And let me just clarify my position once more. I support clean water and voted for a Mashpee Wakeby wastewater treatment facility and the alum treatment for the pond. I care about this. I did not vote to give up 26 acres of open space for a wastewater treatment facility with no transparency in neighborhood engagement. And my request to you today, I'll be direct, table this warrant indefinitely until full public outreach is done and alternative sites are properly explored with real input from affected residents. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Aziz. Welcome, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. My name is Kalen Thomas. I live at 35 Gunter's Lane, across the street from Chris. I was raised here in Mashpee. I grew up here, and I care deeply about this community and the future of our town. I want to begin by making it very clear, I am absolutely for clean water. Every one of us wants safe drinking water and responsible infrastructure for our town. But clean water should not come at the expense of our last remaining open space, land that this town once promised would be placed into conservation. This facility is being proposed in a location that was never part of any of the town's published water treatment phases. Residents were not properly informed. The address of the site was hidden, and the public was given little to no opportunity for real input. That is not transparent government, and it undermines the trust between residents and town leadership. We are also talking about $25 million in new taxes, hitting households as soon as 2028. That is a massive burden for families, seniors, and working people who are already stretched thin. And for what? For a facility on pristine, open land, land that could be forever lost when alternative solutions or locations may exist. Once that space is gone, it is gone forever. We cannot undo that decision. I respectfully urge the Select Board and town officials to indefinitely postpone this article. Take the time to involve the community honestly. Explore other sites. Explore other funding approaches. Do not trade our open space for an ill-planned rush project that was never part of the agreed-upon phases. Again, I support clean water, but I also support keeping the promises made to residents and protecting the open land that makes our town what it is. Let's do both, not one at the cost of the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Jonathan Small?
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Small.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Small, Sturgis Lane. I'm one of the co-founders of the Save Mashpee Wakeby Pond Alliance. Our waters are dying, and if the waters die, the town dies. It's only a little bit hyperbolic. It all starts at the top of Wakeby Pond. From there, the waters flow into Mashpee Pond, and from there into the Mashpee River, and then on down to the Pompanessett Bay. Finding a way to sewer the homes to the north of Wakeby Pond was a key recommendation of the diagnostic study, which took several years, several hundred thousand dollars invested by the town to complete it. And when Mr. Meter joined the town, he came up with an innovative and quite elegant solution to the problem, which is very likely deployable elsewhere in town. It's innovative and it's elegant because it's not dependent on large infrastructure. Now, I fully understand the concerns raised by the opponents of this proposal, and I completely respect the people who are arguing against it. I've watched and listened to many of the comments made tonight and over the past several weeks. I think their arguments come down to three things, and I'm sorry if I'm misrepresenting, and I'm certainly open to being corrected on this. The first is, don't impact the open space. Find an alternative. I completely empathize with the desire to preserve natural spaces. It stinks that we are in this position. I hate that we're in this position, but here we are. There are no other reasonable alternatives for sewer-ing these homes north of Wakeby, and the money is lined up. We either do this or we do nothing, and the pond cannot afford nothing. Mr. Meter's solution would impact approximately one-quarter of the land, and that land would be restored, not to its current state, but to some nice usable state. And his latest thinking also involves entering the land from somewhere other than Gunter's Lane so that the impact on the neighborhood would be minimal. And he's now even proposing putting the building in the side of a hill to make it even more, to address those concerns. The second argument is that this snuck up on us. It's not part of the plan. But the plan was meant to be flexible, and the diagnostic study created new urgency. Mr. Meter coming on board created a new possible solution, and we moved fast to access state funds. Were missteps made? Absolutely. Were communications flawed? No doubt. But here we are, and that's not a reason to throw the baby out with the bathwater, if you'll excuse the expression. The third is, Wacoit should come first. Maybe, but there's not currently a plan for Wacoit, and we already have a plan for Wakeby with the funds lined up, and those funds are not transferable. We do this or we lose it. Sooner or later, and I would clearly prefer sooner, we need to face this trade-off and make some hard decisions. It stinks that we have to think like this, but here we are. Am I sad about the impact on open space? Absolutely. But the impact on those five acres absolutely pales in comparison to the impact on the whole community if the water dies. I personally would make that trade-off every day of the week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Next, we have Susan Dangle.
Good evening. Susan Dangle, Kattuitt Road. I'm also on the newly-founded Freshwater Ponds Committee, but tonight I'm speaking to you as Susan Dangle, resident and president of Save Mashpee Wakeby Pond Alliance. I think that Jonathan really encapsulized the feeling of our board that has been working for five years to save Mashpee Wakeby Pond. But I wanted to highlight a couple of things just in addition. I agree with everything he said. But things that I've heard over the last few days and weeks and tonight, you know, this adaptive plan that we have, this wastewater treatment, comprehensive water plan that we have, first, in July 17 of 2023, we sat here with nine options to choose from to change that plan because we had to go in a different direction than what was originally thought. Most of the people in this room were here, and we chose one of them. In that plan, we're 45 homes, part of Phase 1A. Phase 1A has been expanded to 100 homes, but that cost for Phase 1A was $17 million for 45 homes. Now that they've done 100, they were able to bring it down by 5.5 million. We found that out at the May Town Meeting. But still, it's on par with the kind of fees that are associated with the project north of Wakeby. The homes on Pimlico Pond are extremely difficult to sewer, and that's going to be part of the reason for the high cost. I, too, have been on Mashpee Wakeby Pond for decades. I remember a clear pond. I remember people coming down with dogs, jumping in, going after tennis balls. I remember no green in the water. I have never heard of cyanobacteria. But now, we're told that we have to keep our dogs out or they could die, and that's a fact. We also have dead fish washing up on shore. That's been over two or three times that we've had cyanobacteria. So our water is dirty. Our water needs help. The entire town's water needs help. And if you look at the areas that are in challenge for Wacoit Bay, there's an awful lot of open space. There's an awful lot of forested area. We're going to have to make hard decisions. And this one, while it is hard and we are going to disrupt some land, my understanding from Mr. Collins is that it will be declared conservation land afterward, and the land will be usable. Jared has said many times it could be the area that will have the system underground could be a field, a playground, or some kind of other alternative in like a meadow or something that would be helpful. So I'm done, because...
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Adams, Alukzak.
Good evening. It's actually six years ago that we started a conversation as a community. Work has been done for decades to understand our water problems and to begin to address them. A plan was formed in 2015, but it was a very difficult first step to take. And in the last six years, it's been very heartening to see how the leaders and the staff of the town have built out the infrastructure to address these problems. And we now have a wastewater head. We have water quality focus. We have the kind of professional work being done to address our water quality issues. But at the time, I helped form a group called Mashpee Clean Waters, and we held something like, I should have looked before I came here, six or eight informational sessions. We planned to do, and have already announced that we're going to do two more this coming month. One is about the Gunter's Path or the Gunter's Lane site, and also, why not Wakeby, why not, sorry, why not Wacoit yet? Because I think there's a whole lot of information that all of us in the community need to understand, and so we'll continue to move forward. But this particular project addresses the issue of phosphorus, and I want to make clear because we studied a lot. There were a dozen people who spent hours developing the knowledge that we shared with folks about our water quality issues. And if you go to that original plan from 2015, I did it, yes, just the other day, there are three mentions of phosphorus in that plan. And all three of those mentions say, "We need to start registering this, and we need to start measuring it, and it has to be considered in the future." Well, nobody anticipated in 2015 that this would be the kind of problem that it's become. And now this plant will address both phosphorus and nitrogen, which was the original problem that was addressed in 2015. It also is a really innovative solution that could be a wonderful approach for a lot of the hard-to-sewer places in Mashpee, where we could take clusters of homes that don't have access, and it would take a lot of money and distance to pump up the waste up to a larger water treatment plant. So I think we have to, we don't rubber stamp the town, the work being done by the consultants, by the staff, by the leaders, but we owe it to the town to accept and support clean waters, both fresh waters and salt waters. And I ask you to support this particular project with an eye to the long term. There's going to be a lot more to come of other kinds of projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lynn Barbie.
Don't act surprised.
Could you just state your name and your address for the record, please?
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive.
Thank you.
Once again, the cart before the horse. Don't act surprised. We've been here before. And I just want to say that what we have with the horse here is saving open space, protecting prime forest land, which the state recognizes, and respecting the 2015 plan. There's no, I'm not opposed to any sewer-ing anywhere, but I am opposed to sewer-ing in this location. And we need to put the horse before the cart. We keep doing this, and it doesn't, it creates a lot of real, a lack of trust in the town and the procedures and the process. And just to remind everybody, the horse includes the alum treatment, which is what will address the phosphorus, not really the sewer-ing. And we want to do the alum treatment. We all want clean water, but we don't want to give up what is a beautiful forest land with a lot of trees, that does a lot for our environment as well, by cutting down trees, placing something in that area that will have a road, will be disruptive to all of the natural wildlife. And we are not being told all the details about what this wastewater plan is going to be because we know there will be a permanent road. We don't know how big it will be, and we know that it will, in fact, impact the natural life. So we have our horse before the cart, and I urge you to postpone this article till we can get to the point where we do have the horse before the cart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Arden Russell.
Hi. Arden Russell, Sturgis Lane. I currently live only steps away from Mashpee Wakeby Lake. I can see it from my window. My family has swam and played and ice skated on that lake every year since we arrived in Mashpee 36 years ago. And now, another generation, my granddaughter also swims in that pond. My son's dog's name is Wakeby. We love that lake. It's an important part of our connection to this town. However, I am not willing to trade one valuable resource for another. We should not have to choose between protecting open space and clean water, but that's the choice you're forcing us to make. And that's exactly what you're asking the voters to do, if you were to tell them that this is open space, which to date that has not been made public. Are we trying to solve one problem by exacerbating another? By releasing 26 acres of land to development, 26 acres of open space to development, and you're going to tell me it's not 26 acres, and there's a lot of talk going around now that it's only going to be a small portion of the land? However, these are the facts around the amount of land that we're using. The select board voted to release Zero Gunter's Lane, 26 acres for wastewater purposes. That was the vote. Not a portion, not a maximum, not seven acres, 26 acres. Mr. Meter and Mr. Collins don't make the decision around that. The select board did. They chose 26 acres. At the July 14 select board meeting, the wastewater superintendent stated that they will carefully cite the facility on the property in a way to be able to make expansions. Does that sound like seven acres? The SRF application for this facility states, and I quote, "The area affords the town two additional management strategies. It's close to sandwich, providing future opportunity to address other nitrogen needs, and it may afford the town an additional strategy for managing groundwater discharge." Both of these are going to need additional land. It's absolutely disingenuous to say this is only a seven-acre parcel to be used. There's no reason to believe that. The select board action, the wastewater superintendent, the engineers, and the SRF application all contradict that statement. I, too, am asking you to postpone this article until we can develop a better solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, Irene Chekovitch.
Good evening. Irene Chekovitch, Sunset Strip. First, let me say that I am opposed to the Mashpee Wakeby Cluster System in terms of the timing of this project, the chosen location of the treatment facility, and the lack of transparency until recently regarding the public notice of that site's location. However, I'm not here to repeat what I wrote in my July 25 Enterprise Guest Commentary or what so many residents have already stated. Instead, I'm here tonight to talk with you about what I experienced last week at the public and televised sewer commission meeting. I went there to hear the update on Zero Gunter's Lane. But in addition, what I heard was a scolding for not working together, which I found to be absurd, since the time for working together should have been 12 months ago, when I believed the Zero Gunter's Lane address should have been shared with the public. Moreover, I heard a lecture clearly implying that if you're against this project, you're against clean water, and you're even against the sewer project moving forward. Anyone who knows me knows that these implied allegations are absolutely untrue where I am concerned. For the last eight years, I've devoted myself to all things environmental, including advocating for clean water in all of our ponds, bays, and rivers. I'm a member of the new Freshwater Ponds Committee, as well as a community partner for the Mashpee River Restoration Project, and I've fully supported all sewer projects up to this point. Plus, for years, I've even financially supported organizations like Save Mashpee Wakeby Pond Alliance and Citizens for the Protection of Wacoit Bay because I respect their work and I value projects on which we have collaborated. So last Thursday, for a sewer commissioner publicly to imply that anyone opposed to this project is not willing to work on finding solutions and that our opposition to this one project means we're against both clean water and sewer-ing, that was not only ludicrous, but honestly, it was insulting. There are many sound reasons why I, myself, and others are opposed to what I believe is a non-transparent and mismanaged project, and one that should not be inserted in front of our mediation for Wacoit Bay. So at a minimum, I would greatly appreciate it if our motives are not misrepresented, either in future town meetings or upcoming information sessions. Given the fact that sewer commissioners themselves are not all in agreement about the value of this cluster system, why wouldn't town residents also be split? And lastly, on a personal note, I deeply regret that valued colleagues and I are on opposite sides of this highly divisive issue, but I respect the fact that each of us is fighting for what we believe is right. Regardless of which way this project goes, I'm hopeful that we can put these differences aside while continuing to work together on shared objectives. For myself, I certainly am eager to do that, so the ball will be in their court. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Reed, please. Hi, Ms. Reed.
Rich Reed, 23, Gunter's Lane. I've been up here before. I fully support all of my colleagues back here. They do more work on this than I have, and that's because I just found out about this just a few weeks ago. So to come in on the ground floor of this, I have to rely on... I have to rely on them to come up with all of the statistics, even with the Wakeby people. I am not against clean water. That's for sure. I mean, if it's going to take 30 or 40 years, that's fine. I'm not going to be here in 30 or 40 years. Somebody else will, but they need clean water, and that's for sure. But we don't need this put in our yard and said, "This is where it's going to go." And that's how simple it is. When you bring these trucks in, whether it's down Gunter's Lane or down Peters Path, where's the staging area for all this going to be? There's going to be massive trucks. Look at what the dump site was like. Those trucks were everywhere. So I urge that this article be taken off in the October ballot, and that we come up with some other way to work together to figure out what the situation is going to do, how we're going to create it, and get the clean water, and get, you know, sewer systems going. That's what we need. So that's what I urge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Kevin Schofield, please.
My wife would like to go first.
Certainly. Colleen Schofield, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Colleen, and I'm a resident of Gunter's Lane. My husband and I are Cape locals, both being born and raised in Barnstable. When we had the opportunity to move back home to the Cape, and we were trying to decide where to buy our house, we thought a lot about which town would be the best fit for us. We were drawn to Mashpee due to its history of prioritizing open space and preserving nature. When we found our home, it felt like the perfect fit for us. Our property abuts Zero Gunter's Lane. The neighborhood's deeded open space.
I don't know whose phone is on, but could you silence it, please? Thank you.
Can I just start over?
Yes, could you wait to be recognized as well? You can...feel free to start over.
Thank you. Again, my name is Colleen. I'm a resident of Gunter's Lane. My husband and I are both Cape locals, both being born and raised in Barnstable. When we had the opportunity to move back home to the Cape and were trying to decide where to buy our house, we thought a lot about which town would be the best fit for us. We were drawn to Mashpee due to its history of prioritizing open space and preserving nature. When we found our home, it felt like the perfect fit for us. Our property abuts Zero Gunter's Lane. The neighborhood's deeded open space. Before deciding to buy our home, we walked to the parcel and saw Mashpee Conservation Commission signs hung throughout, and even confirmed that the state recognized the land as conservation. We are now being told that the town never followed through on the promise to place the land in conservation, that the state was wrong in recognizing it as such, and that just because conservation signs are hung, it does not actually mean that it is conservation land. Now, we are being told that this land, which was the main reason we bought our house, is being turned into a sewage treatment facility. I understand the need for clean water. I spent my childhood swimming in the ponds on the Cape. I want my children to be able to do the same. There are other ways to clean up the ponds and lakes, which are already being implemented, such as the alum treatment to remove phosphorus and the upgraded drainage project at the boat ramp. We should not have to choose between clean water and open space. This land was meant to be conservation. It is listed in the town's own action plan as tax-taking to the Conservation Commission. Now, the town is not only exploiting their own negligence, ignoring their own bylaws, and going against their historic values in preserving open space, but they are doing this while keeping residents in the dark and pushing this project forward without full disclosure. The town warrant and the proposed Mashpee-Wakeby project do not have an address listed. You have asked residents to vote on a project without telling them the location. Abutters to this day have still not been notified about this. The town manager has said that this has been a clear and transparent project. What is clear and transparent about no disclosure? The only place that the address is actually listed is on the SRF application, which was not public and filed in 2024. If the town has known the location for this long, why has this been hidden from the public? I'm truly worried about the precedent this project is setting. I was told by the Sewer Commission that any cluster development deeded open space can be redeveloped as long as 30 years have passed. They are actually considering doing this in other neighborhoods. This town used to advocate for open space. Your own bylaws state cluster development deeded open space is permanently restricted, and that land should be kept in its undisturbed natural state. This precedent, the precedent this project sets is that cluster development open space can be redeveloped after 30 years, because the deed restrictions have expired. If the restrictions expire, what is to stop a developer from building more homes on land like this after 30 years? We are so excited to join this community. Now, I can't help but feel slighted by the town of Mashpee. If this project goes through, we'll move. Just because a project can be done doesn't make it the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Schofield, would you like to speak?
These are copies of your own documents for you. Just...I'll hand them out after. Good evening. I'm here to express continued concern.
Would you just state...I'm sorry, would you just state your name and your address, please? Thank you.
My name is Kevin Schofield. I am a resident of Gunter's Lane. I'm here to express continued concern regarding Zero Gunter's Lane, specifically also the town manager's comments around this at last week's meeting. He claimed that if we wanted to protect this land, we should have paid our taxes. I was the only resident at this meeting. This is not the residents' fault. We trusted the town to protect this, as your own bylaws state. This is the developer's fault. He is the one that failed to pay the taxes. He failed to establish the HOA, and the trust that had oversight over this land had one person in charge, the developer, not us. Blaming the current-day residents for the town's taking of this land 28 years ago and antagonizing them by saying they should have paid their taxes is not professional and is not right. I'd like to read you something. The town's zoning bylaws, specifically regarding open space. Open space requirements: A minimum of 50% of the upland area of the parcels shall be permanently dedicated as open space. Yet, the town claims these restrictions have expired. Can you explain to me how something that is permanent has an expiration date? But I'll move on. This is also on your protected open space map from the town's website. Also, the town's surrounding us automatically recognize things on their open space map as Article 97 protected land. Why are we different? Let's also look at this very board's action plan, in which this lot is discussed. Transfer 31.3 acres Pimlico Heights Cluster Subdivision open space to Conservation Commission. That never happened. And according to the town manager, I cannot hold the town accountable for promises or action plans that predate current representatives or employees. This land is also currently has about...has at least six Conservation Commission signs posted throughout it. The town's official stance on this is that that was not done by them. A town employee actually stated to me that just because the land is posted as conservation and on our protected open space map does not mean it is protected. So where does that leave us? Residents cannot trust the town's words. We cannot trust the town's documents. We cannot trust the town's bylaws. We cannot trust the town's signs. All of these mean nothing if you vote for this project. What are we supposed to trust? The town's intent, maybe? No. The town's intent for this land was for it to remain undisturbed and in a natural state in perpetuity. So I ask you again.
Wrap up, please.
If you vote yes on this, what are we supposed to trust? Also, the town's legal opinion does not address Article 97 protection. It does not address our cluster development open space.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schofield, I need you to wrap up. Thank you.
This is my last statement. It does not address any of our concerns. Why not?
Thank you, Mr. Schofield. Mary Wagan, please.
Are you interested in the documents?
You can leave them with the assistant town manager, and he'll distribute them later. Thank you. Would you just state your name and address for the record?
Just going to get up to the mic, I know. Okay. So anyways, my name is Mary Wagan. I live at 35 Ashunit Road. I've been a member of various town boards and committees for almost 20 years, and never have I been so concerned about a warrant article as I am about Article Number Four. Article Number Four will result in the destruction of pristine open space. Construct a wastewater treatment system in its place, and in my humble opinion, this system is not necessary and a complete waste of taxpayer money. It's a full-fledged distraction from the cleanup of Makoi Bay, which has a much higher need for cleanup, and it does have a state-approved plan. The cleanup of Makoi Bay is in our 2015 nitrogen management plan. So claims that there's no plan to clean up Makoi Bay are false. The purpose site for this system is Zero Gunter's Lane. It's 26 acres of open space that was created by the planning board in 1987. Our zoning bylaw allows for cluster subdivisions only with the provision of permanent open space. As noted, the previous speaker, the legal opinion that came out as a title search, and it does not address our zoning or whether Article 97 pertains to this land. I'm not in support, obviously, of citing public infrastructure on open space, especially when there's no priority need to sewer this area. A significant portion of the nitrogen entering Mashpee-Wakeby Pond is attenuated naturally by the pond's ecological system. This is in the 2007 needs assessment. For this reason, the area was given the lowest priority in the town's nitrogen management plan, only to be acted upon in Phases Four and Five, and only if Phase One, Two, and Three didn't solve our nitrogen-nutrient problems in Makoi Bay and Pompanasip Bay. Also, we have the Mashpee-Wakeby Pond Diagnostic Study released in 2024, which states that the phosphorus load from wastewater in this area is relatively small. Sections Four, C2, regarding watershed wastewater phosphorus management state, quote, "Wastewater inputs to the Mashpee Pond and...sorry, Wakeby Pond and Mashpee Pond basins were relatively small components of the phosphorus inputs..." dot, dot, dot. "Since these percentages were relatively small within the overall phosphorus budget, reductions in the wastewater phosphorus would provide complementary water quality benefits rather than attaining the basin water goals on their own." Complementary, not priority. I hope you remove Article Four from the warrant and follow the recommended plan for the ponds, which is the alum treatment. I attended the Sewer Commission last week. I heard that to do nothing was unacceptable. We are doing plenty for Mashpee-Wakeby Pond. You asked for a diagnostic study? We gave it to you. You asked for money for the alum treatment? We gave it to you. The stormwater improvements at the boat ramp, which are not inexpensive, we gave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, that went down the wrong way.
I have some diagrams from...
Could you just leave them with the assistant town manager?
Thank you.
Was there anybody else here who intended to give public comment that didn't get on the list? Okay. Okay, thank you. Was it all good for the agenda? Thank you. I have these. Okay. Excuse my voice. That water went down the wrong way. Moving forward, we are going to look at review Draft Four of the October 2025 Town Meeting Warrant. Okay. And on the warrant, we have Articles Four, I believe, Five, Six, Eight. We are going to get Ten redlined, I think, and Article Twelve.
I'm sorry, the red line was sent email to you.
Okay, thank you.
To you all. So we wanted you to have an opportunity to read it before.
Perfect. Okay. So I'm looking at Article Four. Is that correct? Is that where you have us starting?
We could. We could. Since that's the...you want to end at that one? Go backwards? I mean, I don't care. It's your choice. You have a chair.
It's the first one here. I think we should just...I think we should move to it. So...
We do have the Fire Chief and the Deputy Fire Chief here for...
I'm here. Great. Let's move to that first. Thank you. Thank you for that. Do we want...do we want them to come up?
Hello, welcome.
Joe Felte, Fire Chief.
Chairman Ramsey, Deputy Fire Chief.
So I think you have before you the article. We're looking for some equipment. Been down a little bit of a road through CIP initially, because the cost was over 25K. Then we had a meeting with FinCom, and after FinCom, we ended up with the town manager to what this article says now, which is basically appropriate these funds out of the 2026 fiscal year, not the 2027 CIP. Any questions that...what you read or want to facilitate what this... Because Brennan was my EMS officer for years, and he dealt with the Striker Company and for the last three years, and sort of put this plan together. It's all about saving money for the town of Mashpee.
So if I could, Madam Chair.
Please.
The items that you will be hearing about were going to be purchased through ambulance receipts, and I believe fiscal year 27. So this is accelerating it. There is a cost savings attached. That's why it's before you. The only thing that I changed in regards to this language is it can't be fiscal year 27. We got to pay for it in fiscal year 26 if we're receiving them in fiscal year 26, which we would. But I will let the chief and the deputy chief explain the cost savings as it relates to the issues at the end.
You want to go?
Sure. I'm not sure how much background information has been forwarded to you guys at this particular point, but I do have what was brought to the CIP and also to the FinCom if you'd like to see it real quick. It's got numbers and cost savings and things of that nature. And then I can...
I know, it was at the capital improvement program meeting, and this is essentially using the ambulance funds to buy this equipment now, because it's had a tremendous savings, I believe. Am I correct?
They're going to get purchased. We're just trying to take advantage of a plan from the Striker Company. And Brennan, my deputy here, has a past history of sales, and he saw an opportunity, and he took it. And we have also the plan to put the fourth ambulance on the road with this equipment. And again, every time I come to one of these meetings, I keep telling how busy we are. Well, we just did our 26th run today, and we could have used that ambulance probably six times, five to six times, not just today, but any other day. But that's the other reason for this, is to get that ambulance in service, not just as a mechanical spare at headquarters. That will help with this.
And again, what we're asking for is just basically to accelerate a previously planned purchase. We had already 250,000 in our CIP plan that would have been brought forth, you know, next spring.
This fall, yeah.
But because of the deal that we were able to create with Striker, we felt it necessary to bring it through the appropriate channels for approval. As you can see, I was letting you guys kind of digest that. As you can see, just the cost savings alone of the equipment themselves is roughly 50, 51,000. There is a few more items that are somewhat embedded in there, as far as service contracts that won't need to be purchased for the first year at least, covering this stuff. And like the chief said, it will allow us to put the fourth ambulance, which we obviously currently have, sitting it out of service as a mechanical spare, in service as a fully ALS stock, ready-to-respond ambulance. So it's kind of a unique opportunity for the town. It's a unique opportunity for the department to grow. And as we all know, the town certainly isn't slowing down as far as growth is concerned. So call volume is up, and like I said, we just felt it was a unique opportunity to bring this forth to you guys.
Thank you. And if I understand correctly, the clerk was just asking me about what number this would be. It would be special town meeting?
Yes.
Article One?
Well, no, it would be...
Well, no, it would be on the town meeting, but I don't know which article it is.
Yeah, the article hasn't been determined because we haven't placed it. So once you agree to put it on there, and if you take any others off or on, we will rearrange the numbers, but.
So you need a motion to add it to the articles?
And then.
And then we have to motion approve and recommend.
Exactly.
Do I make a motion? Or do you have questions?
So, yeah, no, that's actually, that was what I was mentioning, questioning. So.
And just for clarity, my understanding is as long as we've paid this by June 30th, 2026, we're all set. So we got plenty of time. It's not like this, an urgent rush, but obviously, we want to make the commitment in order to get the deal. That's the bottom line. One of the primary compelling reasons for me was getting that fourth ambulance going because of two reasons. Number one, because of the calls for service, and number two, if one ambulance goes down and we are now down to the three, God forbid, should one be involved in any other incidents, we don't want to be any further down than that number.
Correct.
Tracy? Yeah, I just had a question. And just to confirm, these were already in the plans, all of these purchases, just for the following fiscal year, but for the 50, over $50,000 in savings, the purchase would be now, but the items were already going to be purchased?
Correct. They were on the CIP for the spring. What this particular deal that's in front of you allows us to do is to add the fourth piece, which is the fourth monitor and the fourth Lucas machine. For those of you that aren't familiar with what a Lucas machine, it's an automatic CPR machine that we have on the other three ambulances. The reason for that, and the sole reason for that, is because the current monitors that we have have an end of life of 2027. So, planning the purchase for next year allows us to stay on that. By accelerating the purchase, we were able to go from a trade-in value of $5,000 per monitor to $16,000 per monitor, which in itself basically pays for that fourth monitor. So that was kind of the unique situation.
Thank you.
My salesman.
Are there other questions?
I do not.
Do you want to make a motion?
See, I can make a motion, I just want to make sure that this revision is correct.
And you would vote to add?
Yeah, right.
Right now, it doesn't exist.
So I'd like to make a motion to add this to the warrant articles, and is to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $2,221,831.92 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation amount to the fire department capital account to purchase four LifePak 35 devices and one Lucas CPR device for the fire department, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second? Second. Discussion? John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Now, you're okay. I'd like to motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Discussion? John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and sorry for making you wait.
You're fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So review of draft four of the 2025 town meeting warrant, we continue. And the first article that we are reviewing is Article four, and that's the article to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $25,900,000 to fund the construction and so on and so forth for the Mashpee Wakeby Pond Cluster System. We have that in front of us. One thing I would like to say is, like many people here, and you know me, I like to dig deep. I spent a lot of time looking at both this project and the history of it. And I think I've been at all the public meetings, or most of them, at which this has been discussed. So I wasn't confused about the project. With regard to the location, there's been a map that's been out and been shown publicly many, several times, many times, I think, that shows the lots north of Mashpee Wakeby There are, I believe, three lots there, two of them have wellheads, this lot was ident-- and one's Article 97, I think, and the other has wellheads. So as I think about our town manager and our staff, you know, they've made this information available. They've shown maps of the area, you know, could have, they have stated zero Gunter's Lane, you know, possibly. But I have to say, with regard to the town manager, town leadership, and town staff, I've seen, I've been at everything, and I've seen absolutely no attempt to mislead. So I wanted to mention that. I also think it's important to look at, there's some question about Wacoit Bay, and has this sprung ahead of Wacoit Bay? People who are in the room and people who are at the town meeting know that we didn't have sufficient, we couldn't find sufficient recharge area for Wacoit Bay. At May town meeting, voters approved, and then we approved on the ballot $200,000 for Wacoit Bay to identify an appropriate site that has recharge. What's happened in the past few years is the Department of Environmental Protection has tightened up its regulations. Makes sense, they're trying to protect other surface water and our drinking water from recharge, and everybody wants to implement in their drinking water. So Wacoit became a difficult place to site a system. What I've understood from town staff is that's compounded by a PFAS plume that has moved. So there is the study that's underway right now to site a treatment plant with sufficient recharge. And as you know, recharge is a problem everywhere. Falmouth has so little recharge, they're building a pipe out into Nantucket Sound. But that's in the works. There's also, it's about 12, I don't have notes in front of me, about $12.5 million that the capital improvement program approved for Wacoit Bay to go on for the May town meeting for design, and for design with sledge removal. There's approximately 100, it's over 128 million, but I don't remember the exact figure, that the capital improvement plan approved to go on the subsequent town meeting. So I just want us not to lose sight of the fact that everybody here is concerned about Wacoit Bay. We're working hard to make a difference for Wacoit Bay. I also want to point out, I've heard a lot about trees, and I always, I always joke that I don't like to cut down a single tree, ever. When we cite, and when we decide to build that plant for Wacoit Bay, there's no barren land on which to put it. So we are going to be cutting down acres and acres of trees. So I just want, I want to contextualize this, I think it's important to do that. With regard to Mashpee Wakeby, so people say, is it Wacoit? We're going to say Wacoit Bay or Mashpee Wakeby Pond. I think we have to say both. Can we say both right now? No, it's, that's not the choice we have. The choice we actually have is, do we work on this for Mashpee Wakeby Pond, or do we elect to do nothing? The money that we've been granted through SRF funds, this application was submitted last July, it's gone through a vetted process with impartial DEP reviewers. They only approved 50% of these, they approved this to move forward. That money goes away if we don't do this. I'll say one more thing, and then a lot of people talk. I also am profoundly aware of the tough choices we have to make. Nobody wants to use land, nobody wants to deforest land, nobody wants to use land. I think we have to start thinking about environmentally balanced decision-making. How do we say we're going to let the bay just continue to deteriorate because we don't want it to forest land, and we will let Mashpee Wakeby Pond continue to deteriorate? Alum's a Band-Aid, if you don't stop the source, and I believe it was Ed Eichner that identified the source of phosphorus from those wastewater, from the wastewater treatment that side, those houses, at about 52%, but I don't have the notes in front of me, but I think it's 52% of what's contributing. We can put alum in, and that will, we need to, we voted for that. That'll adhere to the phosphorus at the bottom of the pond, and it'll keep that phosphorus there. But it's not going to solve the problem, we need to stop the problem at the source. So those are my thoughts, and I will let somebody else speak.
I know, Madam Chair, I know for me, you know, I try to be reasonable in how I approach my decision-making, and I've been paying attention and listening to both sides. This is probably, you know, one of the most difficult decisions I'm going to have to make, because it is pitting, you know, environment against environment, and that doesn't sit well with me. You know, I think everyone's done their homework and articulated very well their concerns, and they're all valid. And, you know, I don't feel good about being put in this position. I blame past administrations of the select board and the town in egregiously building out the town as much as they did, especially around our waters. And, you know, that's something that's been an issue for a long time. As Madam Chair said, you know, this is where we are, and we have to make difficult decisions. I just want to stress that this one doesn't come lightly. I think tonight, folks have made some really good points, some that raise additional concerns that we have to address for future, so it doesn't continue to come back and bite us. You know, for the folks that mentioned the legal opinion not factoring in the, our own zoning laws and conditional approvals, that's a concern. I think we need to do something as a select board to address that for the future. I think that when we hear conditional approvals attached to subdivisions, that it's our interpretation that the spirit and intent is that it is in perpetuity. I'm kind of taken aback by the fact that it's not, or there's another step that needs to be done for it to be in perpetuity, that, or we drop the ball on associating a CR to open space conditional approvals associated with subdivisions. You know, these are all things that make it very difficult for me, and I think I can't address in this situation, but I'd like to ensure that we take steps to ensure they don't happen in the future as a board. I've talked enough, I'll let Elvis.
I guess I would, wasn't there some concern or some interest in finding out if Sandwich was going to participate in some of this process? Do we know where we are with that at all?
We do not at this point. For, I don't want to misrepresent time, I was looking through notes, and Sandwich's engineering company and GHD were to start some conversations this winter. We did receive a letter or an email from Sandwich indicating that there was interest, but there's not a firm commitment.
Okay, so in addition, I heard something tonight, which I hadn't heard for quite a while, which is some concern on the part of the citizenship about the way we communicate, and how well we communicate, or on the alternative, we all kind of support what Dave said. So I think we need to do a better job of communicating somehow, whether it's in writing or mailing or whatever. So, and third, you know, we talk about protecting open space and land, and I agree with it for sure, but if the water goes, no one's going to walk on the land. You can't have it both ways. I mean, if you let the water go, so it's ruined, and that land will be no good either. At least we're doing something from a sewer protection methodology, we're protecting a lot of the land. So if you have to give up a little bit to protect it all, and this is a hard decision to make, but that seems to be the right decision. That's all. Mike calling.
Thank you, Mike. John?
Yeah, I mean, not to repeat everything, I mean, David, Mike, Kayla, you know, to echo your thoughts and environment against environment, and what has to happen for decisions. We did get a legal opinion, correct, that we are, you know, maybe whatever happened 28 years ago wasn't put in, never filed the paperwork, I'm not sure, but am I understanding correctly, as far as this is legally, you know, our attorney has looked at this, and I'm assuming that what they're looking at is what the attorneys have provided as the revised verbiage, correct?
KP Law sent out to an attorney for the follow-up work, and you should have this.
This is going to be a lot of.
And.
I have it.
And this is dated August 13th. It is addressed to Shirin Everett of KP Law, and draw your attention to page two, number five, that says, "In summary, we found no instrument of record that would prevent or inhibit the town's proposed project to construct a wastewater treatment facility at this location," quote unquote. That's from attorney Richard M. Golden.
The other thing is disrupting, cutting down, disturbing of trees, you know, to your point, it's never easy. I do hope, I know we, you know, if this does pass, it's, you know, similar to a housing development plan, I hope it's not just a clear cut, I hope it's they, you know, utilize what they have to to accomplish what they need to, you know, to accomplish. I would like to see, you know, I heard a lot of comments, and I, as far as transparency, I don't think that anything was deliberate, but as far as transparency, as far as address, I'm a big visual aid person, so I'd like to see, you know, specifically Article four with a very simple map explaining, this is the, you know, this is the site that we're, with the lot that we're talking about, these are the residents, and it can be a very simple, like block map, which anybody can look at and say, okay, visually, I understand what's being done here. Because what I don't want to see is an absolute, how many acres, we're talking about, the site itself is maybe, what, six?
The site is 26, we're talking about.
26 total, right, but I think six.
Four and five to seven, yeah.
All right, so that, I hope that's, we're not talking about clear cutting 27 acres. I know it's almost like I say it like tongue in cheek, but I also seen that in, you know, housing developments, that I'm like, did you need to do that? So a nice visual aid, a map, so at least if it does pass, if it goes in front of the people at town meeting, they can visually, and they can make a vote on what they see in front of them and what they read. So very, it's tough. I mean, David, you know, you said environment against environment, I, that's where I feel, it's tough, so.
Tracy?
Yeah. I have a lot of thoughts on this matter. What comes to mind initially really is my connection to the land, the water, the space, the importance of the quality of the land and waters, because culturally, I believe if those are desecrated, we are desecrating ourselves. So water quality and environment is of the utmost importance, and I don't think that, what I'm hearing from-- and I don't think that, what I'm hearing from both sides, if you will, is in agreement to that, that people do care about water quality in Mashpee, and that they want the waters to thrive once again, and they do want their, you know, kids and grandkids to enjoy the same things that many of us have been able to enjoy throughout our lifetimes. And I also hear about the lack of transparency, which I think is extremely important. The rollout of any process, it doesn't matter if it's a small project, if you're planning an event, or it's a large project such as List, and we're talking about water quality, that it's really important to engage key stakeholders to understand the, you know, the pros, the cons, to talk through. I mean, some people, including myself, you know, really mapping out the different plots and why, you know, it couldn't work in another location as opposed to this one. Those types of things are underneath it all relational. And so I too have found this past few weeks to be really heavy and challenging, and also just very open to hearing them, any different perspectives. So I just do want to say that I appreciate people sharing their very, you know, genuine thoughts and feelings about this matter. And I think that if there are the variables available to us now, I'm really concerned if, at, you know, phase two or three, we haven't hit the nitrogen goals, or there's still challenges, the alum treatments. I want to say they're only ten to fifteen, they're not permanent solutions. They are temporary, and while I'm grateful for that and strongly supported alum treatments, I am really concerned about the long-term sustainability and longevity of our waters and land, which are just of the utmost importance to myself and, you know, where I come from, and especially as a Wampanoag woman, really. And that's what I really wanted to say. I really want to plus-one what John had to say. I do feel that when people are making decisions, they need to have all of the details in front of them to make informed decisions, whether they support or do not support something. They should know visually, they should understand what it means if they vote yes for something, what it means if they vote no for something. So I would really be in support of something additional that goes with this article, because the people are right. The last article did not include the address. And I'm really not sure where that ball was dropped and how those decisions were made. Possibly wills in motion before I join Select Board. So I do really agree with John, and perhaps we could look at helping residents make more informed choices based on feedback in the spirit of relationship-building and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager.
The Mashpee-Wakeby Cluster IA was one of my goals unanimously approved by the Select Board in July of 2024. It was subsequently shared with the Sewer Commission and town staff, and it was featured on the Enterprise of July seventeen, 2024. I'm quoted as saying, "A project evaluation form for the community septic system at Mashpee-Wakeby Pond is due to the State Department of Environmental Protection by July twenty-sixth. If approved, construction possibly would begin in spring of 2025." From the start, the wastewater department has made it clear that the cluster system would be built on town-owned land north of Wakeby. They've shown maps of the area. Could we have stated zero guntes? Absolutely. Why didn't zero guntes initially be listed? It wasn't listed because the wastewater superintendent wanted to make sure that all options were absolutely exhausted before it was that particular one. The multi-year diagnostic study of Mashpee-Wakeby illustrated the need for this project. The project will remove nitrogen from the Papaneset watershed and remove phosphorus, the primary contaminant in freshwater from entering Mashpee-Wakeby. This project was vetted by impartial Massachusetts DEP reviewers and approved for zero percent RSRF financing based on its merits. The assertion that the project presents a choice between McCoit Bay and Mashpee-Wakeby, I think is factually flawed. The obstacle to wastewater treatment in the McCoit watershed is the recharge capacity, or so I've been told. That's the information that we're going with. We had a timing problem, and if we're going to go forward with the SRF deadlines, things were in fact rushed. Nobody is at their best when we're rushing. But I must say that the lack of communication, that has been referenced, which I acknowledged and explained, went down like this. The wastewater superintendent went to the consulting engineer. The consulting engineer went to the surveying group and said, "We need you out there, and we are on a tight timeline." The surveying group went out there without telling the consultant, who had no knowledge of it, so the consultant didn't know they were going out there. The wastewater superintendent didn't know that they were going out there. So certainly, I didn't know that they were going out there. They were trying to be proactive. They were trying to do the right thing. They were trying to get ahead of the curve rather than be behind the curve. Is that something that the town is gonna try to make sure doesn't happen again? Absolutely, no question. But everything was being done in good faith. Everything was being done in the timeline that we could adhere to or should adhere to. And in terms of any statements that I'm blaming anybody for not paying taxes, that's a mischaracterization. Nothing is more important to me than my integrity. And my integrity's never been questioned when I've worked for towns and cities for forty-five years. Anything that I said is on tape, and I invite anybody to look at it.
You know, I just, I want to echo some of the things I've heard with regard to, I truly empathize with impacted homeowners, and the town has had miscommunication issues, or communication missteps, actually, when things didn't get to people in time when they should have. Like, every other town on the Cape, we're moving wastewater treatment projects forward at a time of changing regulations, evolving technologies, and we're all trying to meet funding deadlines. These deadlines save us a ton of money. So I know the town manager held a preliminary meeting with the Butters and concerned residents. And also, there are four additional meetings to take place during September and October at seven o'clock PM, which seemed to be a good time to be able to get people here, where the GHD will be here, the wastewater superintendent will be here, the town manager, I imagine some Select Board members, to address concerns and ongoing concerns. And at that time, I think it's important to recognize, the town manager mentioned that the wastewater superintendent didn't identify the certain lot immediately because he wasn't sure which lot they were going to use. They had four of them to look at. I think also, the whole plant isn't designed, so you'll have a visual rendering of what this will look like before it goes to town meeting. And I think that's going to include post-construction plans with land restoration, possibly, I know, pollinator gardens, successive growth areas that'll create habitats that encourage biodiversity. And I think seeing those things may put people's minds at ease. But I fully agree with all of you that people need to see this, and they need to see what it's going to look like. The amphidrome itself, as you all know, is subterranean, so that land can be redone. It can be restored. You know, it, again, will create a new habitat, but those things should be available to people. And four meetings at seven o'clock to address questions that people have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask, you know, on future meetings where we have water quality updates on there, that we kind of get some more frequent updates. I don't know what's appropriate as far as the cadence on the Wakeway Bay, but, you know, we have to start looking at what's available to us for land. I don't know what's wrong with the fire station property. We built a cell tower over there. I understand there's plumes that are limiting some of those identified parcels that potentially could be discharge areas. But I don't fully understand why that property couldn't be used, because you have, you know, both Quashna and Childs in between the basin, that area. So the other one, the other one I want to mention, and I'll shut up, is the asking Joint Base Cape Cod to come in here and put them in the hot seat, and what are they gonna do to step up? You know, PFAS is impacting our decision-making to address Wakeway. They need to come in and get in the hot seat for a minute, and we need to ask, prepare questions for them to, they're responsible at the end of the day. You know, what are they doing about it? How are they helping us? That if it's holding us up from addressing Wakeway, they need to take the heat, too. And, you know, that, I guess, both of them under water quality updates. It would be helpful to get periodic updates on how to move forward from here.
Be more than happy to do that, sir. I would point out that they're probably having discussions when it comes to the PFAS with the Water District, and not us, but that doesn't mean that we can't get them in here and address your questions.
It might be good to have information, some sort of update from them on how discussions are going, and any way we can support them and put more pressure on them. We should have that information prior to the Joint Base Cape Cod folks coming in.
And we could certainly have the Water District in, too, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to, I always mix them up. Help me, John. A motion to approve and recommend, or recommend and approve?
Correct.
Is there a motion to recommend and approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that's with the new language, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, correct.
So we need to first do that, replace the language.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
You want to amend your motion?
Can you amend your motion to include the new language?
I moved it, all right. So I amend my motion to replace the language per the memo.
From the CIP?
Yeah, recommendations of the KP Law.
Second.
Is that who drafted that language?
It was recommended by, it was recommended by Bond Council, the new language.
Thank you.
It's difficult to reference.
Oh, this motion was by Bond Council, not by KP Law?
Bond Council's the one we get these, for these borrowing numbers. They come from the Bond Council. KP Law reviews it, to be sure. They're in sync with it, but this is the one from Bond Council.
All right, so my motion is to replace existing language in the warrant with the newly revised warrant Article Number Four language as recommended by Bond Council.
And there's a request for somebody to read it. Could the clerk read it, please? Thank you.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer upon approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of twenty-five million, nine hundred thousand dollars at one time or from time to time, under the pursuant to Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven or Eight of the general laws, or any other enabling authority, and to appropriate said sum from purposes of paying the costs of construction of a remote collection, recharge, and treatment facility to help manage both nitrogen and phosphorus in Papaneset Bay and Mashpee-Wakeby ponds, including all other costs incidental and related thereto, as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee, that the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to authorize to borrow all or portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter Twenty-nine C, and in connection with, therewith, to enter into a financing agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the Select Board is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project, provided, however, that any borrowing authorized hereunder shall be expressly subject to and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued hereunder, or take any other action relating thereto.
So that was your revised motion. Is there a second to that?
Second, second.
Second. Is there further discussion?
This, yes. Yeah, so the difference between the two article drafts, they look, they read slightly different? And
Yes.
So how does that work? If we're making a motion, it has to be for the new one as recommended by Bond Council?
Thank you. David initially made the motion, and then he amended his motion to include this new language that you're reading, that John just read.
So we're not approving, at this point in time, Madam Chair, just for clarity, we're not approving to recommend. Right now, we're switching out the language.
Right.
Is what we're trying to do in this action.
Okay.
And we'll have to make a subsequent motion to approve and recommend if it goes that way.
Okay.
Right.
So, yeah, we're only voting on the new verbiage that I just read.
Thank you, Tracy. Is there other discussion?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike? David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Is there a motion to approve and recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, John?
So sorry.
Please, no, that's okay.
Okay, quick clarification. Do we have to record, or are the minutes sufficient to state that we're adding with this particular article a visual aid or plans of some sort? I think that should
This is, they do have this, yes. You mean the recording secretary?
I want to make sure that to respond to feedback, that we are gonna add some sort of visual to this.
In the warrant, to accompany this.
Would you mind amending your motion to include a
Yes.
A detailed visual?
A detailed map description?
I would.
Article Four.
I would require some sort of visual aid to accompany the newly adopted language. I would. Require some sort of visual aid to accompany the newly adopted language in the warrant article, yes.
I'll second that. Perfect.
Thank you for bringing that up. Discussion? Seeing none. John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Next, we have Articles 5 and 6. Articles 5 and 6, we held last time because they're listed as placeholders. Is there additional, did we receive any additional information? Either for the Assistant Town Manager or the Town Manager? Do we receive, did we receive any additional information on Articles 5 and 6?
Madam Chair, which article?
There are Articles 5 and 6. They were submitted by Waterways, and at the time when we reviewed them, two weeks ago, I think you indicated that you had asked for additional information, and none was forthcoming. We didn't have materials.
Okay. I am familiar with those.
Thank you.
The Chair of the Waterways Committee did attend the, I believe it was Finance Committee. But I've had no discussions with them, and as previously stated, the Harbor Master is not really plugged into this. This was a Waterways Committee initiative, so I can't really comment on it because he never had a discussion with me about it. He didn't elaborate with the Harbor Master. My questions would be, if we're going to take money out of the Waterways account to cover this, then what is going to be sacrificed in terms of equipment or dredging, which is what we pay for dredging and equipment out of? Secondly, in terms of the grants, I have not seen any language in regards to the terms or conditions of the grants, so I don't know what the source of these grants are, whether it's federal, state, or otherwise, and if so, what other specifics. I was told, because he mentioned it at the meeting, that it will not relinquish local control, so that's a good thing. I would question where the spoils are going to be going, and I think it's going to be very difficult to get permitting for this. And if the permitting is going to be a challenge, the next question that I would have is, are we throwing money out for something that is bound for failure? So, I don't really have a lot of answers. I got a lot of questions, but I don't really have a lot of answers.
When do we have to, Madam Chair, when do we have to, we have one more meeting?
September 8.
So, we have, well, we have another meeting, yes, but when you look at this, it seems like the Harbor Master hasn't been in the loop, which is important. You also have the dredging spoils, which what was spoken of at that meeting, I checked with some people about, and you can't even bring it out. They were talking about barging it out. You can't do that, make those islands anymore. So, there's a lot of, a lot of questions here. And, you know, you can do what you'd like, but I don't think you're going to get the answers that you'd want in this timeframe because there's not enough people meeting on it to decide that.
And to my knowledge, the Grants Coordinator isn't familiar with it.
There's no grants been issued at this point to go towards this.
So, the Grants Coordinator doesn't know about it, and Harbor Master doesn't know about it?
And Town Manager.
Yes. So, it's one of those that you-
It's disappointing. I mean, so, I, so I motion to withdraw Article 5 and Article 6.
Is there a second?
Unless you want them in here at the next meeting.
But they're not, if that point is not going to, I was hoping that we're going to have some answers over the last couple of weeks, because that was the plan.
The answers you'll get are exactly what the Town Manager said to you just now.
Or to have had the Grants Coordinator or the Harbor Master or somebody write a letter for this, or to, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's, it doesn't seem like it's coordinated.
I would think that we'd be all on the same page. I mean, I don't have a boat, the whole thing, but a mariner in town, I think would be a nice thing, but maybe we should all get on the same page, transparency, learn from Article 4 and-
And the other thing is, I mean, obviously, I don't want to go through any ordeal where abutters are not in the loop, so do I have any knowledge that the abutters are even aware that this is under consideration? The answer is no. So, what I think, in terms of communication and transparency, I think it would be a good idea, not to say that we have to, but I think it's a good idea to flood that entire area, pardon the pun, with the message, this is what is under consideration. Maybe there'd be a lot of people that would come up and say, "We don't want any mariner down there." Maybe you would get a lot of people that would come up and say, "That's exactly what we want." I don't know. And then, of course, how many are being constructed? How many docks? Or what is the mariner going to consist of? If we are staffing it, are we going to have to build a facility for simple things like restroom? And then, how much is that going to cost? And we're right next to the water? I mean-
I don't know about DEP Conservation. There's a lot of questions.
Tracy?
And I would think that, as the boss had said earlier, you know, when you rush these things, that's when we run into difficulties.
We don't have enough information, period. So, I would second what John said.
It also says, see the memorandum, which it also said last time, and I'm not sure if I've missed it, but I hadn't seen-
That has changed.
-a detailed memorandum, so I'm not sure where that-
The only thing that I had to that point is the email or letter on, from the Waterways concerning the subject.
Just for clarity, because I made a motion to withdraw, but should I make a motion to indefinitely postpone?
It's up, it's up to the board. I'm just telling you, I can't answer any of your questions because I haven't-
My motion still stands as, is motion to withdraw Article 5 and Article 6.
Now, second that. We don't have enough information.
Is there, is there any discussion?
I'm in agreement.
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike, David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Next, we have Article 10.
Okay, I do have an update from the DPW Director. Sorry, but she couldn't be here this evening. You're referring to Article 10, Madam Chair?
Correct.
The proposed article updates the town's zoning by law, so it complies with the conditions of the 2018 general permit for small manufiable separate storm sewer system, MS4 in parentheses, issued to the town. The permit, which is a national requirement enacted by the EPA starting in 2003 and administered in Massachusetts by DEP, obligates urbanized communities to take specific actions to reduce pollution in stormwater discharges to the maximum extent possible. All of Mashpee is considered urbanized, which is another thing, but at any rate, the 2018 permit imposed additional requirements for post-construction stormwater management for the new development and redevelopment, and best management practices to address specific water bodies. These requirements should have been enacted by June 30, 2020. Required updates were made to the town's general bylaws, Chapter 84, but updates were not made to the town's zoning by law. In April 2025, the town received a notice of violation from EPA and Mass DEP. The town is now under order to make the required updates by December 2025 or face penalty. So, I think I've said enough.
Is there a motion to approve and recommend?
So moved.
Second.
Approve and recommend was the motion.
Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Article 12, and Article 12 is the excessive or unusual noises, and I think the only change here is, at our request, they changed it from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
And that was just a comment of mine. I don't know if the board was in agreement.
Oh, no, I think we were.
Well, that was changed.
Okay.
Yeah. Great suggestion.
Yeah, it was. So, is there, now that that's changed-
Motion to approve Article 12. It's 12, right?
To approve and recommend?
Approve and recommend.
Article 12. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about Article 12 as it's written now? Seeing none. John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And I think those are the only articles we still needed to look at.
I thought we were waiting.
Waiting for, there is one. We're waiting for information from the Planning Board for-
Article 8.
Is it Article 8? Thank you.
I have, we held 7, 8, 9, 10. Oh, no.
Not 7. 7 we approved, 8, you're correct. We did, we did hold because the Chair or the Vice Chair of the Planning Board weren't here to address questions, and the Town Planner wasn't comfortable discussing a board decision. So-
I think that, at that time, Madam Chair, that the, we had talked about, how does that affect other areas? How many would be affected by that split zoning? And he did come back and say, it's like two lots, I think that would be affected. It's very minimal effect on the splits for residential to commercial.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, it was my question, how it affects on, like Mashpee Commons and those-
You or somebody had the question.
So, do we know as an absolute that it affects, could it affect, who else is on, isn't Willabon the other half one too?
The special permit?
Right. I thought-
They're under special permits, so that wouldn't affect them. It would affect the people that, like the one I gave as an example.
Yep.
That would affect that. Anything coming a residential into a commercial, they'd have to use the commercial if they were going to be commercially. They'd have to use a commercial exit.
Right, that's where I came into the question about Mashpee Commons, because they have a lot of these combo usages, which is part of their development plan. That's what I wasn't sure.
Oh, I see what you're saying. But I was under the impression from talking to Brian that those aren't affected because of their special permit they have.
Okay.
That was a question. That was a question.
This would be moving forward also.
Yes.
So, they wouldn't be affected.
That's what I'm being told.
He spoke to the plan.
I certainly can get clarity for you for the next meeting, just to be positive that-
I'll give it up to the rest of the board. I, you know, I just, I hate to have it be, you know.
Clarity's best.
You don't want to leave it open.
If, if it's only one, if, that's the only last one, right? If-
It is.
Correct.
Okay, let me find out.
You want to make a motion, put a hold on Article 8?
Well, it's already on hold, so it's-
Okay, so we don't have to do anything.
If we can get clarity for the next meeting, it'd be awesome.
So, all we have on here is then Article 8?
That's it.
Yes. Excellent. Communications and correspondence, old business, new business, review of requests for one-day expansion of entertainment license at 10 Evergreen Circle to include live band with amplification. Jan Agarbeck, Cape Cod Coffee. Sorry to keep you waiting, Mr. Agarbeck. I appreciate your patience.
I'm Jan Agarbeck, Cape Cod Coffee. I apologize if I'm not discussing water, but we, 10 years ago, we purchased, Pam and I purchased Cape Cod Coffee, so surviving COVID and chicadas and us, fun stuff, all the next, all the last 10 years. We want to have a little bit of a celebration, so we're doing a one-day just with a, with a band. It's on a Saturday from 6:30 to 11:00. We have music all the time, so we're used to it. This is just to be more than just one person playing acoustic. One and done.
Does anybody have questions?
And you're all invited, so.
And approvals are all in place? No questions?
Motion?
No.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm motion to approve the one-day expansion of the entertainment license at 10 Evergreen Circle to include live band with amplification, and the hours was 7 to 11?
6:30 to 11:00 PM.
We have 6 to 11:00 here, but you may just approve it for 6 to 11:00.
6 to 11:00, it's listed, from 6 to 11:00 PM.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? John?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, you too. Review of recommendation for appointment as associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael Maurizio, term to expire June 30, 2029. Welcome, and again, sorry to keep you waiting.
No, thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
Thank you. My name is Mike Maurizio. Just here to discuss any questions you may have from the recommendation.
Can I just say something about, we have your resume, we have your recommendations. If you want to just say something about what your interest is in getting on the ZBA and-
Absolutely. I think it's in line with what I've done for a career. Been a construction manager for 15 years, resident of Mashpee since 2018. And it's just, it's something I want to do to give back to the community, and I figured it's something I have knowledge in, and it overlaps with my work experience.
Well, you certainly have an impressive resume and impressive recommendations. Other questions for Mr. Maurizio? The process of policy one was followed in its entirety, so we're in good shape there. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Michael Maurizio?
Yes.
Recommendation to associate member of the zoning board.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, David, go ahead, please.
You're a current member of the Cape Cod Builders Association?
That's correct.
I don't know if there is or isn't, but would there be any conflict?
There ever was or-
Can you think of any projects that may come before where there may be a potential, just as a scenario?
Yes. Now, I guess if there was a contractor or a home builder, or even a resident that had worked in their own home and they were coming in before the board, I would just recclude myself from that.
But that would be as, associated with your personal employment. The association is your employer?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm a little confused on the question, and I'm sorry. So, that's just Builders Association. It's kind of like a, let's say, a business owners group, or someone, or people with particular interests.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, all right. Thank you.
Does that, does that address it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Do we, we have a motion? We have a second.
Second.
And any other comments or questions? Mike?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
John? Yes.
Tracy? And I'm a yes.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Thank you for your willingness to step up.
No, of course, thank you.
Okay. Public comment for any item not on the agenda. Additional topics, liaison reports. Tracy?
I attended the school committee meeting.
Yeah.
Last week. There's a lot of great energy in the room. They have, I think, 30 new hires, they're all gearing up for the start of the school year, which kicks off on Wednesday. I was also able to connect with, Dr. Connor's the new superintendent, assistant superintendent. It was just a really great space, I'm looking forward to an exciting school year. So, just wanted to share that lots of things are happening in the school community this week, and get prepped up for those morning commutes with the buses. They're coming.
Thanks, Tracy.
It's, I guess it's liaison, but it's more, the council, councilors voted 7 of 5, I believe, to engage Mass Development with a feasibility study of sorts to consider moving the airport from Hyannis to joint base Cape Cod.
Oh. Which town?
Barnstable. Barnstable Council voted, I believe it was 7 of 5, I could be wrong. So, they have engaged or advised Mass Development to conduct a study to do so.
Wow.
And I know we all spoke up.
Yeah.
Not in favor of that, but that's why I thought it's important to...
I'm glad you did.
Just, so...
So, is it worthy of taking a position as a board and writing a letter of disapproval? I mean, is that, is, would, is the appropriate time to do something like that, or?
I, I don't know. I, I, I'm assuming this, they, you know, Mass Development pretty much has to accept it, but again, my opinion, they voted and it's still, it's our tax dollars, it's all of our tax dollars, they, you know, they're like, hey, we don't have to, the way I, I'm kind of looking at it as, I wouldn't want to just spend our tax dollars to, but 7 out of 13 decided that, they thought it was a good idea.
Falmouth?
No, Barnstable.
I mean, what was Falmouth's position?
Well, I don't, I don't think Falmouth, I'm guessing, but I don't want to speak for Falmouth, but maybe we should kind of reach out to Falmouth, I don't...
Yeah.
You know, it may be in collaboration, maybe, you know, engage, you know, Mass Development with a letter, but we, I don't think, nothing has to be done now, but now that we're aware of it.
When did it happen?
Um...
Well, between the, within the last two weeks, yeah.
Last couple of weeks, I believe.
But, so, I, I guess I'd like to, I guess, find out if Town Manager could reach out to Falmouth-Sandwich, and then, you know, if there's something, maybe a joint letter that we could write as the affected communities, I think that might be weighed heavily by Mass Development or anyone else. You know, it's bad for our waters, it's, it's going to be bad for the Mashpee Lake, we're trying to clean up, it's going to be bad for the upstate, traffic-wise, you know, I think there's a significant amount of concerns that would have to be addressed, and I, I don't know that they could adequately address them, in my opinion. I, I just think it's a bad idea, but that's a personal opinion. I'd be interested to see what Sandwich and Falmouth's positions are.
Because it impacts all the towns.
Right.
Did we not send, draft a letter at...
We did.
We did.
I thought we did, but, I mean, if they're moving forward at the county level, I mean...
Barnstable's going to do what they think is...
Yeah.
Right of Barnstable, so they, I mean, I think...
I probably doesn't hurt to get a name, get something out there soon.
It's a tri-town.
I think it's a great idea of reaching out to Sandwich and Falmouth and...
Yeah, I do too. Thank you for that. So, we could look at that at our next meeting, we'd put that on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And if they are opposed, maybe a draft letter or something that we can put in front of the respective boards.
Other liaison reports? I have nothing right now. Water quality, I think we discussed water quality, unless somebody has something else. Town manager updates.
You do have a full copy of the document that is the legal opinion regarding Zerocantas.
Yes.
Also, I know Madam Chair is aware of this, but I just want to make the board aware of the real estate transfer fee issue in response to the housing crisis on Cape Cod and at the request of the Assembly of Delegates. The Barnstable County Administrator formed a working group to explore ways the county might provide practical support to towns. This is in addition to the Shared Regional Housing Services Program that serves as a clearinghouse for resources and provides technical assistance. One strategy the working group identified is the imposition of a transfer fee for high-value real estate transactions. Revenues generated from this transfer fee would be used to support the acquisition and protection of housing that is affordable. The real estate transfer fee proposal will require action at multiple levels, first at the Assembly, then the State Legislature, and finally, the Board of Regional Commissioners. According to the County Administrator, this proposal is in its infancy, the property value threshold, the fee percentage, any exceptions, individual towns' ability to opt-in or opt-out, and the distribution of funds all need to be worked through. We might want to put this on the, I believe it's the September 15 joint meeting agenda between the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Committee for discussion, and unless there's an objection, that's how I'm going to proceed.
I think it would be really good to have that on, that joint meeting, so that we can discuss it and the implications, and then make comments to Barnstable County as this process is unfolding. It's very much in its infancy.
The last item that I have is, like a lot of towns and cities in the Commonwealth and elsewhere, cybersecurity is becoming an increasing issue. We've had a couple of recent incidents that I won't discuss publicly, but I will say that there is a need for specific training with all staff. I know that we generally close Town Hall once a year for an organizational day. I may be seeking very shortly a closure for the sole purpose of getting all the staff in this very room and having cybersecurity training, and I didn't want to blindside you with it. I do have a memo for you, do you have that?
Well, while you're looking for that, I just want to mention that our next step is to go into executive session, so if people were going to finish this and go into executive session, and we're not going to convene in open session, as long as those motions pass. Thank you.
So, I just want to make you aware of that, and I will be coming to the board for authorization to close Town Hall. It's not a day off, it's, it's a working day, it's just going to be strictly devoted to cybersecurity and a few other train...
Coffee, cybersecurity.
No. Well, I'm not saying there isn't going to be coffee, but I will say, there, there will be a focus on professional development in cybersecurity and a couple of other issues.
Okay. Thank you.
No action needed tonight. I'm just making you aware of it tonight.
All right. So, at this time, I'll consider a motion to enter into executive session.
So, move.
Second.
I think we need to...
Clerk needs to read, right?
One of us needs, it's right there. Thank you.
Motion, you want to take your, John?
I move the Select Board enter into the executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to discuss the purchase of 91725 and 33 Pickle Cove Road, Mashpee. If the Chair declares that an open session meeting would have a detrimental effect on the Board's negotiating position, the Board will not reconvene in open session.
Second. In my opinion, holding this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the Board's negotiating position with respect to the potential purchase of the real property. The Board will not reconvene in open session. We need a roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.